It's just a the crossing signs?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Has it been there for a while?
Yes, they have, yeah. I was like, wait, we got new ones?
Well, they really work though. We've gotten good feedback on it.
Is that how you want to play things right now?
Yeah, let's go. I'm ready to roll.
Locked and loaded.
No, I did. I thought we got new ones.
It's called locked and loaded.
He's had it. How many cupcakes now at this point? I think he's gonna win this one.
Almost there?
Yeah.
Good. All right, go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
One second. Okay. Mr. Go first. Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Spencer.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anybody have anything to disclose regarding the others before us?
I do not.
Nope. Okay. The big N O. Do you want to give us Cliff's notes on?
Yes, real quick. Everybody be nice to each other. No criticizing the quirk on the budget. If you're coming in from the virtual world, I please ask that you raise your hand, give me your address and name, same thing for in the room, and we should all get along nicely. Thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, we're here to have a budget workshop. We also have an item on the agenda. I think it's the first item is the Comita letter. This was brought up at our meeting last week, and we carried it forward to this particular section. So before we get into the budget, why don't we just go over that? And Dan, thanks, I guess you tried to put together a few numbers there.
Yeah.
You know, and I know Lily had requested that. And fortunately Lily's out sick. I hope she feels better soon. So I don't think we got any, had any feedback. Okay. From her. Are there any thoughts on, you have a copy of the?
I do.
You do?
Right here.
Okay. I didn't know, made sure everybody had a copy. So were there any thoughts that you all had on this? This was, letter was drafted by our attorney, Dan Spitzer, based on the recommendations from him.
I do have a few things to say. As I started working on it and started working on the numbers, I remembered with the help of Dorothea that the way the taxes work on the restaurant portion of things is that it just gets dumped in with all the twice yearly payments from Monroe County. So that whole bottom section, you just cross it out because it's just, it's not right.
Okay.
The one on the restaurant. So.
The whole bottom.
Yeah, the sort of bottom box, there's two boxes.
That one says.
Yeah, so anything restaurant related on there can go. Just cross it all out.
Because we just don't know.
We just have no idea.
There wouldn't be a way to know.
And it doesn't seem that it's a material amount of money. The thing I was thinking about today was lock, so I was trying to think of like, what's a successful business in the village? A recent one, and I thought Lock 32 seems to make some good money. And I don't know, and I was talking to Dorothea about this, I don't know if we could ever quantify how much more our twice yearly payments were from Monroe County based on what Lock 32 has done. I mean, I'm sure it's more than zero, but actually figuring out the number is next to impossible, nor is it a huge amount of money. Because of that, this whole idea of us supporting Comita on the housing but not supporting it on the restaurant, it's never sat right with me. I never understood a good reason to do that, especially since it's not a lot of money. It's not a material amount of money. And when I come back to it, I just keep thinking that, you know, if we had an unused parcel in the village and somebody made an investment to clean it up and then open a restaurant there, I'd be entirely open to offering them support in their Comita request. So that's basically, so I'm in favor, as you know, of, sorry to babble, I'll get to the point. I'm in favor of, as we've discussed many times and Bob Corby discussed, following through on the village's promise over the years to support Mark IV in their, or PCP in their application for Comita and let the state decide on it. And I don't make a distinction between the restaurant and the housing.
I think one of the reasons why our attorney did is that Comita is geared to the tax abatement for residential projects. And so that, you know, it was just, that was the thought, but we certainly could even amend the second sentence in the letter that would just say, this letter will confirm that the Board of Trustees supports the granting of the financial assistance to the residential portion of the project.
Yeah.
And just send it there, you know, and then not talk about excluding the restaurant. You know?
So just not being explicit either way.
Yeah.
Why would me?
You know?
In the last meeting, the last two meetings actually, Lily asked for the breakout of how much it would cost to show the due diligence, and I haven't had a chance to look at the video from the last meeting, but you gave me a recap today. It's hard, the three of us, with just three of us, the optics is a little strange, but I think we've discussed it enough to, you know.
It's been in several meetings.
Yeah, this is now like the third conversation possibly for, I can't remember.
Do you want me to walk you through really quickly the numbers?
It would be helpful for anyone tuning in, yeah. Yeah, that sounds great.
Here, I can, I can, is anybody on Zoom?
Brooklyn.
All right, well, at least it'll be recorded.
It's being recorded. So hold on, let me just sign it, and then I can share my screen. So if you all want to sign in, you'll be able to see the numbers.
Is this a document that's available to the audience here?
That's what I'm doing.
Yes, it is.
Available. Can you promote me so I can, you see me there?
I'm already promoting.
Join as panelists. And then I'll be able to share my screen.
You should, you have to.
There we go. Okay, so in looking at it, it's really pretty simple, and I think it fulfills what Lily was looking for. On the left, you've got a box of assumptions, says the number of units is 156. I don't know if that's right. Is it directionally right? Can somebody answer that? 156. Based on a unit, I did an assessment somewhere between 50 and 100,000 per unit. I have no idea if that's right. We could make it smaller, we can make it bigger, we can make it a wider range. And so then you just multiply the two and you get an assessment somewhere between about 8 million and about 15 million. You take our village tax rate, which is .00472, basically, it goes on and on and on, but that's basically it. And the length of the Comita credit is 10 years, and I guess the way it works is it's zero taxes in year zero, year one is 10%, year two is 20%, year three, all the way through the end.
Yep. At our, not last Thursday's meeting, but the meeting before, we were wondering when year one starts. Is it when they're occupied or when you start building, or when does it start?
Good question. It depends on the project. The assessment will come out the first year, but it'll be a partial assessment because it will be under construction. It's gonna be a lower value anyway.
Right.
The Comita will probably start that first year.
Okay. So after construction is what you're saying, or it could be during?
During.
Okay. So that first year where it is.
It's low anyway.
It's low anyway, right? Okay.
So, you know, like, you know, you're building a number of buildings, freestanding buildings. So you complete one building in the first year and it's occupied, it's pretty much taking that one occupied building with the rest into consideration. Right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which is reinforcing what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Except year one won't have one full occupied building. It'll be a dirt mess with some concrete, so.
Thanks for the image.
No, except where we land.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So then you spread it out over 10 years, and it looks like the village will receive somewhere between 200 and 400,000 dollars in tax revenue if we give, if Comita grants the credit. And it would be more than that if they don't. So you can call it between 20 and 40,000 a year, but it scales. So that's true over 10 years, but in a given year, it changes. So as this thing ends, we can expect somewhere around 35 to 75 K per year if, when Comita ends in additional revenue, in today's dollars.
Or possibly more.
Yeah, it will be more based on that, yeah. Or possibly less, depending on what happens in the world. But that's basically it. Back of the napkin, that's it. So that's what Lily was looking for, to be able to tell people what this is roughly worth. Does that sound right?
It sounds correct.
You know, at least it gives you sort of a framework for something.
Yeah.
Excuse me, can I speak?
Yeah.
Yes, name and address, please.
Lisa Cole, 44 South Main Street. So Dan, just to clarify, so you're saying if Comita grants the credit, the village will be at 20 to 40,000.
Yes.
And if they don't grant the credit, what does the village have?
We would get somewhere between 35 and 75 a year.
Thank you.
Who wants to ask?
And for the record, I think everybody in this room knows it, but we're gonna say it anyway, we don't have any part of the decision as to whether this happens or not.
Yeah, thanks for restating that. Yeah, this is not.
We're not deciding.
Yes. No, no. The application has already been placed, as I understand, with Comita. It's an independent entity. They decide whether or not we put a letter in or not, you know? So that's where we are. But as Dan indicated earlier, you know, the prior administration supported the Comita application, so, you know, we're here now and they've just made the application, so. But, you know, I think if, how does it sound with amending the letter? You know, where we just leave out that last part of the second sentence that we confirm that we're gonna support the residential portion of the project with that?
Do we even need residential portion of? Could we just say granting financial assistance to the project?
Well, Comita's geared to the residential portion, I think we're reinforcing that, you know, based on what our attorney's. Excuse me, you're not recognized? One second. We're just having a little discussion here. Give us one minute. You know, and this is just based on the input from our attorney. So that's why, you know, I suggest leaving it in.
I'm sorry, it makes sense if the restaurant portion is there, it doesn't, we don't need it if the restaurant portion is not there.
Yeah, we could almost just have this very first have it end.
Financial assistance of the project.
Of the project in the village, and this letter will confirm, or we can still say the letter can confirm. Yeah, I don't think we need to designate between the residential and the commercial. We've decided we're taking that out. I don't think we even need to point out that it's the residential portion.
Okay. All right, I hear what you're saying. I think it has a different connotation.
Oh, that can be okay. I see. Yeah, that can be fine too. I'm okay with that.
Do you want to take a look just at how I, if I did? That's all, just to take out that last bit.
Yeah, so what I'm proposing is this, this letter will confirm that the Board of Trustees supports the granting of financial assistance to the project.
Oh, just the one sentence?
No, so the whole first part, that's good. And this letter will confirm that the Board of Trustees.
Removing the residential.
Right, because it's not relevant. Supports the granting of financial assistance to the project.
Well, I actually think there's a reason why our attorney made a point of saying that Comita supports the residential tax abatement. That's what Comita does.
Okay, and that's what the attorney, the attorney.
Right, so I'm just sort of, you know, taking the counsel, the legal counsel from our attorney.
Please, please don't turn it into that. So.
I can turn it into whatever I'd like to, because I have my opinion.
What I'm saying is that makes sense from a sentence structure standpoint. It makes sense when you're making a distinction between apartments and a restaurant. It's not needed when you are only talking, not talking about a restaurant.
I hear what you're saying.
I don't want to bring Dan Spitzer into this because I've found him to be combative about this.
Okay. Okay, I understand your, I understand that. I do. I understand what you're saying.
Well, the way you've written it. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
The way you've written it has underscored the support of the residential portion without explicitly saying you disagree with supporting the restaurant portion.
Right, we've taken that.
But it's still underscoring that the main concern is the residential.
It's geared to residential tax abatement.
So I mean.
I don't know.
It could go either way.
Yeah. And I think that the last part that says, but does not support, let's just take that out. I mean, it's a negative statement, let's take it out. We support the project, we support the residential portion of the project.
Okay, I'm concerned it will raise more questions from them.
From Comita? You think they're, have they ever?
I don't know that it would. I think they.
It's making a distinction.
Dorothea, I'm gonna ask you to weigh in, just because I see you're thinking about something. It's pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah, I don't think they ever contacted the municipality until the end.
Yeah, I think it's until you get a determination, right?
If I received that, I would say, well, then what's the other portion of the project?
Well, they know the whole project. They have all the information about the project.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But, so we're making a distinction of the residential portion of the project? But then the implication is that there's another portion of the project?
They already know that. They already have the application. They know what in its entirety is going to be built on that side. Yeah. And, okay, yeah.
Just for clarification, the program that we're applying for the jobs plus program allows for 15% of commercial with the residential. So yes, they have, they know that, and I appreciate you modifying it. It's much better whichever way you're talking about it. My preference is to leave out the word residential because in the restaurant building, the restaurant building is also a part of the community building and the pool area. So, you know, if they say, okay, they're only supporting the residential part, and they somehow try to bifurcate the restaurant, you can't bifurcate half the building, it's the whole project. It's one tax parcel, it's not separate, restaurant's not separated out. So my preference would be to word it the way Dan is doing it. Either way is better than it was before. I appreciate it, but seems simple. It's really, there's one sentence. We support granting.
We understand what that is. No, we do understand what that is. I'm just putting forth what our legal counsel said, you know? And if you were here, you probably would speak more eloquently than I would.
In his email, he said, which was motherly, he said, you can support it, not support it, support it, or you want it, I think he gave you guys the.
Yeah, that was one email he sent, yeah. And then he also has specific counsel with our board.
I'm not.
Yeah. Yes. No, you're right, you're not. So, yes.
Lisa Cole again, 44 South Main Street. So Danny, we had mentioned of the, you kind of separated the restaurant, and you kind of used Lock 32 as example of income that the village gets. Do we have numbers like what Lock 32 would be?
Yeah, so that's what's impossible to get. So we get a, we get two payments a year from Monroe County with all of our, four payments a year, four payments a year from Monroe County with our sales tax revenue, and it's somewhere around a half a million bucks, more or less, figure take.
Yeah.
Okay. And we get no detail of that. And that's money from, sales tax revenue from Pittsford Village, from Pittsford Town, from Monroe County. It's just a bucket of money that we get. And so when businesses come and go, our numbers don't really change for how much we get. But we've gotten pretty good at predicting them.
It's a calculation I refuse.
Yeah.
Because my understanding is that the restaurant is gonna be a full restaurant food bar, not just a year, but a full bar. So to me, that seems like it's very different as far as the business aspect goes and income from a Lock 32 of just, you know, five years to a full restaurant.
Okay, then use the Erie Grill as a comp. We still have, or Jojo's, we still have no idea. And it still doesn't, and our money doesn't change year over year when businesses come and go in the village.
It's based on the square footage.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so here we are. We've had a discussion of what would you like to do? Your motion, is he not? You want to wait for a full board? What do you want to do?
Well, then we're waiting for the full board to Thursday, at least one more person.
So a week from Thursday.
Yeah, that's just not this Thursday, I meant next Thursday.
So it's whatever you want to do.
We've talked about this.
Excuse me, one second, excuse me, one second, it's back to the board.
This is at least the fourth meeting we've talked about this.
Yeah, it is.
People's positions on it are very clear.
His positions are clear. It would be better if we had all of us here. I also, I mean, we've had now four meetings of this, right? This is the fourth one, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any news flash at this point, you know? I think we see, you know, we see what's before us. Is there a motion?
Can I make a statement before you? Sorry, Lisa Cole, 44 South Main Street. As the village president, I would feel very, I would feel much better if all of our board numbers were there to represent us on this. You know, you're making a recommendation from the village trustees, which represents all of our residents, and I would just ask if you could do a full board, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Chris?
As the applicant, I appreciate your time on this. This is the fifth meeting on one sentence that I've asked for. I really appreciate it, and I'm meeting with Comita tomorrow. It'd be really fantastic to go in with a letter saying, hey, the village supports this, help me out here. So if you're gonna be done now, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And, you know, and I see both sides, and I understand, you know, the idea of having a full board. We have had, in the other meetings, for the most part, full board discussions, and, you know, we certainly know where people stand. And, you know, we do have an applicant that's trying to move business forward as well. So, you know, I bring this back to the board, no further discussion from the public unless there's someone online.
I can't see, Dan, can you stop showing yourself?
Oh, sure.
Just in case. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd feel more comfortable if you would make the motion. You know where I stand. If you want to vote for what I stand and make the motion, that includes that if not, make a motion that you would be comfortable with. I don't want, I don't want to split hairs.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. You know, and I find, usually I don't like to make the motion, I think it's better for the board, the trustees to weigh in. But I did, you know, just take off the end of that last sentence. So the motion would be to support the Westport Crossing Comita application to approve, for the board to approve the following letter. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Pittsford has been asked by Mark IV Enterprises for a letter of support in regard to the application for financial assistance to Comita for the Westport Crossing project in the village. This letter will confirm that the Board of Trustees supports the granting of financial assistance to the residential portion of the project.
Second.
Okay, so move and we'll call.
Trustee Spencer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll have a letter, we'll sign the letter and have it ready for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And good luck with Comita. I think it's gonna be fine for you guys. And thanks to the public for their input.
Good luck with your other job.
We're cruising along.
I heard Dorothy did a good job.
She did an amazing job.
That's me.
Oh, you're speaking?
I'm trying to give myself some room and I want to scream.
Okay, so.
I did.
Where do we begin?
So many places.
I know.
On our schedule tonight is to do generals, to look at that, and then just a quick discussion on Stor, and then I want to review the tentative schedule. The 27th isn't gonna work for us because there's a HPD meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna have to work it out.
Okay, so we'll take a look at the end then.
Yeah, and I think we're trying to schedule the 28th for code meetings so we could double look again. I don't know, because we're starting that, I think, later.
Okay.
To try to accommodate people.
Can we do that by the emails for everybody?
Yes, I just wanted to bring that to everybody.
Yeah, just so we're all on the road. Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Okay. So in front of you, I gave you new spreadsheets because the month of this, on a Friday, weren't good enough for me. In an effort to try to make things very clear for the board, I have added some color coding. Yellow are lines that are either moving or being reallocated to different lines.
And the reason why they're going, as I recall in the last discussion, the reason why they're being reallocated to different lines is for clarity, to really.
For clarity. Also, there's some lines that actually, after talking to the accountant, Zach Knight has spoke to them, our accountant, and looking at the numbers, lines for VPW, we were using lines that really they wouldn't normally expect us to use, so.
Okay.
And we didn't have lines we should use for the CHIPS portion. It's worth entertaining comments.
Now, right, can you hold for a second? We just want to have Dorothea start in on the budget and just give the framework for, excuse me. Just can we, hang on one second, just let Dorothea finish, please.
So then the pink are new lines.
I've got it.
There are a couple pages.
I don't know if you have the update, though.
Oh, that was the update.
Oh, good, okay.
Just to read before the world freaks out, these are draft, these are working papers, so they're not finalized numbers.
Yeah, this is a draft, so it's not to be, you know, you know. Okay, thanks, love, appreciate that.
Okay, so the pink are new lines that we help, figure will help those areas be more understandable, more easier to understand where the money is going. It got rid of some of the bucket areas that things were commingled in, and it just made it clearer. I also have on this sheet anticipated amounts going over to Stor to help offset those expense lines.
Right.
As we discussed.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And I tried to give explanations along the way of what certain lines are. In the packet you received on Friday, I showed you estimates that came in. I think we have all our estimates in, so. Okay. The initial budget we received had, between revenues and expenditures, was about 300,000 off. So we did work on this today and made additional changes.
Can you speak to that? Because I think what you're showing, if I'm correct, is trustee Lakev wanted to see everything.
Correct.
So if you could just round that out for us?
No, there was concerns. The initial, the reason I, my tendency is to balance it, just the way I am, I like balanced numbers. But the board wanted to see the numbers with everything in there before we actually went through and did realistic cuts. So it was more transparent to what was needed, what, you know, full impact.
Okay.
So the full impact would have been a 300,000, or a deficit between our revenues and our expenditures. expenditures.
Okay, and that's before you get to really, you know, based on the internal discussions with departments. What, what would be deferred or what would, you know, okay, just so, so we're all understanding. And I personally would like to thank you for the larger print.
Can I, can I ask you a question? So I just want to make sure I understand how to read this. When you've got in there, let's just take the first line. And you've got, over, over to the right, you've got 2023, 2024 tentative of 24,700, right? And then you've got sewer split total of 2750. So is the total budget 24,700 plus 2750?
Yes.
Okay. So in some cases, like, like the, for the village board, that's about 10% of the total budget. And for the mayor, it's 24%. And so it changes based on the line item.
Correct. No, no, not actually, the only place it changes is with the village board.
Okay.
Because of your allocation. The rest, depending on salaries, are a difficult one because there is percentages where mine is 40, 40%, Zax is 40%. Any other line, what we did to get to the overall split number is as recommended. We looked at the total salary, we took the average of the salary percentages to get an overall average, which ended up being 25%. So the split number is 25%.
Okay.
For anything outside of salary.
Okay, got it.
And that's for, that's for our personnel. But DPW personnel, you'll see, when she gets to it, has a different split.
Yeah, it all has a different split. But the total average for, you know, electricity is going to be 25%. Health, you know, 25%. Because you want to get to a stable number to use. You don't want to sit there and every, okay, this one's 22%. Unless it's something spectacular, you're going to build the building. It's a different thing. You're going to look at the allocation of the use.
Thanks.
Okay.
So that average is based on the accountant and also meets the controller sort of best practices.
Yep, that's the discussion we had at the previous budget meeting going through. So we got that number, I did the, did the allocations, and we came down to 25%. Zach checked my numbers and I shared them. You're comfortable with that split.
Thanks.
Okay, so going through, you know, there is some numbers that had some hard fluctuations this year. Really, where we're going to see a lot of that is in healthcare.
Can you call up the pages, please?
Page seven.
Page seven, thank you.
You're going to see healthcare had increased quite a bit. And that's because we have more people on the healthcare is another reason. We just need to accommodate it. Plus, the New York State retirement went up. Again, that's an impact of salaries, and as those go up, we're going to see that all change. So that's the biggest, one of the biggest impacts on here. But the other impacts are, on my portion, we have the two big projects with the HVAC that I recommended, as well as the window repairs.
What are those account numbers?
That is on page two.
My pages are different.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be, yep, that's going to be 1620.
1620?
Yep. It's under village hall.
Got it.
And it's labeled as such.
So that's the windows HVAC, okay.
Yep. And then the other biggest impact is coming from DPW.
Okay, and each, put it on three.
Yes.
So that would be?
That would be by 5110.
Okay.
And in this line, you're seeing we're getting rid of 5020. That's highlighted, that whole section really didn't apply well. So we added.
So all of 5020 is going away?
It's all going away. We've also added 5112, which is CHIPS, which is recommended from the controllers. That's where we need the use of that money should allocate in any projects being done with CHIPS.
That's great.
So that makes it clear your, technically, your CHIPS line in the.
That's on the next page.
Disproportion should match your anticipated, anticipated revenues. That makes sense.
That's great, CHIPS is broken out because I already know.
So the big projects in here, you're going to see is $35,000 in road work. Plus, we have two vehicles.
Truck 14.
Truck, the F-150, truck 14.
Not seeing truck 14.
See, I didn't test you this, okay.
Oh, no, no, wrong page. Sorry, I was looking at F-150.
Truck 14.
Yep, gotcha.
We shifted these numbers around a few times. This is actually, in this version, this would be truck three, truck 14 would be in the regular purchase. I've been playing with trying to balance it, so I apologize. So those are some big projects, as well as the retaining wall. I think Zach went over that. That's included in here, and that's a $30,000 project. And also, Line Street is showing up under the CHIPS.
Where's the retaining wall? It's on page three.
It's under other projects?
Okay, sorry, I missed it. Yep, I'm right there, got it, okay.
Okay.
Just caught it.
So 30,000.
So that really bumped that line up.
Yeah. So, okay. So then are all the list items in the table?
A good portion of DPW's lines are in here, except for the vehicles. It's very hard to accommodate some of those large vehicles. We're going to have to take a hard look at that and with reserves. You're also seeing in this your reserves in this budget.
Yeah.
That we recommended. I think we need to take a hard look at that as well.
Okay. My other question for you is, completely years past, we have taken, you've kind of pooled all the salaries in one place and then allocated it sort of at the end. Is it, you've done that way?
Yes, right now it's sitting under road personnel in the 5110. You'll find it's the second line. You see, I've broken out the administration for the superintendent, his, he has a separate line, and now road personnel is on the second, third line now.
Can you, can you give me an account number?
5110, street maintenance.
So that's page three.
It's 297,000, it stands out like a storefront.
Yeah.
So we already know the totals of CHIPS, it's only going to be 73, why, I think it was more than that for some reason.
Um, we're using a different amount this year.
Okay.
We don't know what we're going to see in a, I know what the rollover is and with the anticipation, plus we have some money sitting there that can be used for road projects, which I'm anticipating to lose on the mill and pay.
So that may go up, we're hoping.
We don't know, so we don't know.
Keep it.
It's a guess. One good thing, putting it in the CHIPS line, it, like I said, it associates to a revenue line. So let's say we don't get, we tailor that line down. You know, that's what budget limits are. You, you just can't spend what you don't get. So that's one that really zeros out.
Okay, great, thank you.
So is there any question that I kind of skipped over? I, you know, a lot of these numbers, they just go up a little bit. You know, we took them up for our GME, we looked at some of the lines, how they were performing, and added a little bit here and there. You know, without a magic ball, I can't tell you what everything's going to be.
Did you use a standard multiplier?
I looked at what we expect already, and what we're seeing is increases.
And then gave it a little push.
The other thing I did try to do, except for the contingency line, I tried to budget in the whole numbers.
Yeah, yeah, rounded.
Yeah. Doing the changes.
Yes.
So what happened to truck?
We can't find truck three.
Well, truck three is there. It's actually, truck three is labeled, as I said.
I'm not finding it online, that's why, we were literally looking for it online.
Truck three is under CHIPS right now.
Oh, truck three went to CHIPS.
Wait, but it's not labeled.
And they said truck 14. Okay.
So are we crossing out 14 and putting in three?
You can, but I'm going to have you cross that off in a minute.
Well, then I'm not doing a thing.
No, don't do a thing, because.
I am, I'm at last.
I balanced, and then I unbalanced, so I can bring it back to the board because I didn't save my sheet prior to balancing. Don't ask me. I've touched this thing way too much.
It's been nonstop, you know.
To make sure, I was trying to make it very clear for the board and give you a readable sheet. Truck 14 is actually in the actual DPW budget.
Okay.
Under that road vehicle, which is not labeled.
Okay.
So we had our budget meeting today as a group and went through these numbers. And realistically, $300,000 of an increase from taxes is not going to work. I don't see the board voting in that way. Zach and I, we know when we put things in, we need to have a realistic number.
And again, that's really loading everything.
What happened to that?
He was just getting comfortable over there.
It's like Dorothea Pitschko. So what I'm recommending from the village office is moving to the windows portion.
For this year?
On the budget this year. And my reasons for that are two founded. We're trying to get the grant to have the overall assessment of the hall and use that for grant findings.
Funding.
Funding.
Yeah, 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 but you were too late.
I'm making up words. So we, we might do better with doing that. We might save actual taxpayer dollars if we can get some grant funding to help.
So we start in on it.
It's a big piece.
Yeah.
Let's just say, it's a big piece.
$53,000, yeah.
With the HVAC, there's a chance that we'll get rebates and other things. Whatever we can get back on that, maybe we can shift of repairing some of the really windows that need to be repaired right away as we go along. So that's, that's my point.
And then also, you know, upgrading our HVAC system gives us the points as a climate smart community to put towards more grants.
Right.
That are not matching grants, we just get a direct grant.
To me, doing the, doing the HVAC gives us a better payback.
It really pumps us up, yeah. Yeah, on a lot of levels.
Of the 55K that's currently allocated for windows and HVAC, how much is windows, how much is HVAC?
43.5 is windows.
Okay, so it's 55 minus 43.
Yeah, that'll drop that 80 down, 88.
84,750.
Yeah, that'll drop that down. That'll drop it by 40.
So 1620 is now 11,500, with account 1620, it's now 11,500.
No, no, it's more than that.
Yeah, it's.
When I look at.
Because you have the balanced one, it's already done in your sheet. Leave the number alone.
Okay, so that 55 is right?
That's right.
That 55 is just for village hall, including HVAC?
Correct. And gives a little extra in case we have any emergency with your work.
So the only thing I should take out is just take out the.
What we're going to do is net.
Correct.
So it's really HVAC, et cetera.
55,000 or whatever, Westport, West left us for HVAC.
Okay, thank you. So now that leaves Zach. Because really, I'm trying to grab my little big ticket items I had in the budget outside of desk, so I'm really trying to keep the desk. So I'll give it to Zach for your section.
Before we get to that, when do we talk about headcount? That's not this meeting, right?
No, we're close.
Okay.
We're close.
But it's not this meeting?
No.
Okay.
I, I think that actually requires more board members to go for salary. And the impact on the salary, I don't think is going to be that big of a discussion because, you know, a portion of it is already determined by union contract. A larger portion of it. So that's pretty much set in stone.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then what about the legal fees? When do we talk about that?
We can talk about legal fees anytime you want. These are the estimates I received.
You received all the estimates.
Yeah, all the estimates are accounted for.
Do you want to talk about legal fees before we go digging into that?
Well, I think we should talk about legal fees with a broader group.
Okay.
Hobson Russ saying, so this is a general problem that we've had since the beginning, which is that we get these estimates from these legal firms and who knows if they're right. Because Hobson Russ is in there for 3,500, which is incredibly low. In last year, they spent, let's see, 1920, they spent 63,000. This year is budgeted, 2021, it was 50. This year, it's going to be 10 ballpark.
And they've spent 72.
What page are we on?
Page one.
One, right at the front. Oh, yeah, here we are, sorry, I was looking through.
So just 3,500 feels like, and we'll have a broader talk about that.
Yeah, would be good to have the, because the two representatives of HPB and planning board aren't here either, the trustee liaisons. Even though we've got the estimates, just to have a realistic conversation.
We have the estimates, things have been shifting down, and, you know, we're realizing hopefully we're coming to an end in that line.
Yes and no. I mean, we're about to go into the actual project. The thought that our legal would go down to almost nothing feels unrealistic.
Yeah, why don't we revisit that?
Can you just flag that as something to talk about?
Yep, just to, and then if you look on page two and it's line item 1900. So that, that's the line for Hobson, the Hobson agreement is removed, and also the settlement for FOPV, because they're now paid down. So that's at least paid off.
Yes.
Right, okay.
All that's paid off.
Okay.
So those are zeroed?
Yep, those are zeroed, okay.
Yep. It's all good stuff. That was actually, thinking that way, that was money that was actually moved into budget, into projects or vehicles, so.
Yeah, we can redirect it, basically. Okay.
So Zach.
I wasn't prepared to speak, unfortunately. But just the short story is.
What are you?
We made concessions, I suppose. The F-115, F-150 Lightning, I think the, is the additional vehicle to our fleet we wanted to keep versus extending the F-450 truck 14. That was going to be covered under possible payment, correct?
14 is in the budget.
14 is in the budget. Three was scratched for another year. Because right now, we're in a good replacement schedule with truck three. So I think we're seven years into it, and I would recommend to, to trade that car to replace that every six to eight years. So we're in a good spot to, to extend it into next year. And then 14.
Is in.
Is in the budget, yes.
Is what we were hoping to keep. So with doing that, that reduces it down to 65,000.
So so far, what have we netted out? Between the windows, you said?
About 108.5.
Okay.
So between the two items, we dropped it down to 100, 100,000.
We're at 300?
Yeah, so we're getting.
So we're chugging along?
We're getting.
Okay.
So. So then, the ending of the story really is the reserves.
Okay.
We're suggesting this year.
That's 9901?
Yep, 9901, that's your last page. Our, my suggestion, group suggestion, actually, as a whole, to, since we are reviewing those reserves and establishing them, getting going, there's some concerns with the lifespan of funding those thing, the lines. You know, maybe 10 years to fund the full equipment line is a little heavy handed, maybe it should be 15. line is a little heavy-handed. Maybe it should be fifteen. Yeah. So what our suggestion this year is to re-allocate the existing reserve that we have into the appropriate buckets and find them that way this year. And let's take a look at the end of the year and see if there's any money we can shift into the reserves as we go along. And then next year, look at starting the funding with a proper number, because this is kind of heavy-handed. We agree. Thirty-six thousand out of the budget is a huge hit. So.
But we're trying, I'm sorry, we're trying to have a more true representation of, you know, what the new blocks were, you know, before they're articulated and trying to revolve those.
And so then the repurposing, because we talked about this when we were, talked about repurposing the reserves. So essentially, we're just taking the money as seed money now, at least, for this first year.
Yep.
Okay.
And seed it. You get it seeded. That'll give it a good start, though. Reduce us a year on our actual timeframe of funding it fully. So I think it's a good start. And we're recognizing it. And now we are establishing those lines. So with doing that, that reduces us again a hundred and thirty-six-five. So.
Which brings us to?
So that gets us down to about forty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
And.
Let me go back a little. Is there expected to be?
Tax increase?
No, is there expected, so you said at the end of the year, we'll move some funds over if we have some extra.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping it really depends on how things finalize out.
If we get more sales tax revenue or something like that.
You know, honestly, we're looking at a big project coming in. It could come in into revenue, one-time revenues as the lien permit fees, we could see that maybe, might be more next year. It's hard to gauge that. And I don't wanna count that as revenue until there's a good eye towards it. We just don't know what's gonna happen. I'm looking okay. Everything's funding trending fine. I'm hopeful. It's too early. This is a discussion like April.
From what we've seen, the sales tax figures have been pretty much as predicted, right?
Yeah, they are coming in as predicted, maybe a little over. It'll be interesting to see what this quarter's check does. That's gonna be a linchpin for me. And you'll see in the revenues, I increased it a little bit.
Yeah.
But I'm not going crazy on that one, because I really have, I don't know. You know, we took it up substantial this year, and there was really good reasons to do that. But I don't wanna go too far off that mark, because I'm not sure what it's gonna do.
And the county's looking at a reduction of some of the sales.
Some of the different areas are reducing or eliminating, changing the percentage.
And we're not sure how that would affect us.
I don't know how it's gonna hit us. I really don't. So I don't wanna count on revenue we can't guarantee we're gonna get. I think this number seems pretty stable. And as always, if the number isn't performing, we look at the expenditures. If it means we have to cut something, we have to cut something. But we watch it as we go along.
I think that's realistic, though.
So we're three sixty-seven twenty-nine for the year.
And that's two.
Two more.
Two more.
And we budgeted six fifty-seven, three fifty. And you put in six sixty-five, which seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable going too hard on that. I think that's more detrimental to the village if it doesn't.
Yeah, and that seems nice and conservative. Okay, thank you.
It just kills me to look at the interest on our accounts.
I tend to be conservative on the revenues.
Yes.
You don't know what it's gonna do. You know, the fine, the good news is with the parking fines, I think we're finally getting to an answer with that. So we'll start seeing the revenue.
That's true.
Right now, all the money we collect is going to, due to other governments, and we're fixing that. So hopefully I'll be getting some extra revenue lines to show up for that. Because he is getting the revenue. It's just I can't quite make it clear to the board right now.
Yeah, for us, we depend on getting the check from the town.
Yeah, because we have to get it over.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so it's still forty-five, roughly forty-five K.
Forty-five K out there.
Okay.
And.
Can I add to it? I do think we should revisit the idea of increasing the mayor's salary. And I respect, Elisa, that you don't want that. But where I've always been concerned about it is that right now, that mayor's salary is in there for like fourteen thousand dollars, something like that.
Something more, plus more fifteen. I don't even know what it is.
It's sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
Oh, yeah, that's because I get a phone stipend, too.
And that feels like all we would ever attract for that job are retirees, the independently wealthy. And I think to make it more realistic, something around fifty thousand dollars or scaling up to fifty thousand dollars is reasonable. So I'd like to just add it. We can talk about it when the rest of the board is here.
Further discussion, yeah. More people here.
You're laughing.
I am, because if to have any, let me just say to have this, looking at the increases, if we go to the taxpayers, which I think we need to this year, it's five percent, which I feel is reasonable. I'm gonna tell you, you add forty-five, thirty thousand, you're almost nine, ten percent.
I was thinking maybe twenty.
Just hold on a minute, though.
I understand.
Just hold on a minute. I wanna make sure that, so other people gave their wish list items at a time, and they got built into the, to the budget.
Yep.
And this is just my wish list.
No, and I understand.
And so this is not the thing that tips us over. We have to look at the whole thing. It's just one on the list, and I just wanna make sure it's on the list.
Yep, no, absolutely. I can throw it in for discussion focuses. You can deal with it.
Sure.
But.
Maybe it's the kind of thing we scale up over X number of years, but, you know, do ten thousand a year for five years or whatever. I don't know.
You know, personally, I agree the salary should be more.
Yeah.
Mayors are here. They dedicate a lot of time in the office. It's twenty-four-seven more so. Not that you guys don't work hard. It's just like there's more pressure on the mayor. So that's my personal opinion.
How insulting.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Dan.
It's the way I am.
That's fine. It's accurate. You're a hundred percent right.
But we're very close. So the good news on this is we're very close.
Great.
So what I would suggest for the next round, just to make my life happier, I'm going to balance this, okay? So then we can work from there. And if there's any scaling back or adding, we can play with the numbers then. But at least, you know, we're dealing with a balanced budget. And so to me, it's always better to start balance.
Are we at the point where it makes sense to do that exercise, where we just, I can do it in Excel, where we just highlight the ones that are moving a lot, either up or down?
Yep.
Are we at that point?
You can go ahead and play with that.
And start talking about the outliers.
Yeah, good idea.
And we can have that.
So just, once you balance it, send it to me in Excel, and then we can do that.
Actually, I can do that.
Because he's got the, he's got the best word. He's got the latest.
Well, you're gonna add some things.
I'm gonna play with it. Let me play with it.
And get Truck Three and fourteen sorted.
Yeah, I'll fix that. It's in there, correct. I'll get the labeling right. So really, that's the discussion on the revenues and expenditures. Unless there's something else the board would like me to discuss on it, I think we're accommodating everything we really need to do. The one thing, you know, it's great to say we can purchase three trucks, four trucks, do this project, do that project. The thing we're running in, and I think this is why we're trying also to be very realistic. We can't get it, we can't get the vehicles quickly. We can't get the work done. We can't, you know, getting bidders. And it looks like we're gonna have a bidder for the back entrance.
Oh, good. Great.
So it's starting to bring, getting those projects done has been really handicapped for us. So I think looking at realistic things we can do, I hate to say, let's get this done. And we can't get it done in the budget time. And I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers, nor I feel it's fair to us trying to take off what we can't do.
Yeah. Yeah, because you were, you were telling us today about just, for the one truck, just that aspect of lead time.
Yeah, Truck One, just to get the cabin chassis, if we're gonna put it in order today, it'd be about eighteen months out. And then to have it upped, it would be about another probably five months. So it'd be almost two years, most likely, in ownership of the vehicle. So that's why that one was pulled off.
Yeah.
With one more year.
You can't get it anywhere.
Two year out.
And the town's going through the same thing.
Oh, yeah. It's not just us. It's across the board. Everybody trying to get equipment. It looks like we may be at the peak of that delay, hopefully. But I mean, there are a lot of back orders that still need to be filled, so. Yeah. And next year, we could still.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I can't even remember. I was reading it, that there still is the back orders before you even get to.
Yep.
Any order coming in, for example, as you say, today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, we need to look at that really hard. And that's, I think, why good discussions around the reserve and starting those funding, so we can actually acclimate some of that money as needed to a point, you know, we need to get it funded. But we also have realistic needs with some vehicles. And that's one that might even need to be somewhere down the rainbow. Maybe we take out another lease or whatever. The one thing we did do, and this is a request from the mayor, which I think is actually very helpful, if we go to page seven, the last, right to the end.
And what's the number?
We're looking at the debt service and leased equipment.
Okay, so nine-seven-three-oh?
Nine-seven-three-oh, nine-seven-eight-five. Here's our ending dates on our current debts.
Yeah.
So the good news is, we're really almost done with our bond.
Yeah.
So when is that done?
It's done in May of twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really good to hear.
Twenty-nineteen F-450.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Yep.
Ten twenty-twenty-four, so that puts us in a good position for next year.
Yeah, and then twenty-twenty.
We'll fill it with another bond.
We, we're going to. I mean, realistically, we're going to.
No, it's good.
But there's good debt.
Yeah.
I mean, there's bad debt and there's good debt. And making that determination is really important, because it's not credit card work, running around buying lunch. This is vehicles. This is something, and you're casting that on appropriately, especially road projects. It's not just today. It's benefiting its people ten years down the road.
Future.
Yeah, the plan is, is there. So we're not having to continue what we have in. So hopefully in the future, we won't have to.
Yeah, because once we do Southwood, Sutherland, for example, you know, like, that's, gotta laugh. You know, that's the real deal.
Yep. So the next discussion we're just gonna touch on lightly is sewer. You're seeing with the sewer splits, four hundred and eighty-five thousand. I really need to play with the numbers and look how that's gonna impact. Because in this number is actually the salaries and other things that we have had overall.
Where is that four-eighty-five thousand?
On our last page. If you look at the very tally.
Just give me the account number.
It's just the very bottom. Go to nine-nine-five-oh and look at the bottom with the grand totals.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep. So technically, that should be your sewer budget, if I did everything right. But I really have to play with sewer. I haven't even touched it, to be honest. I just started looking at what we were looking to do with general.
Because now you're only looking at it relative to, as you just said, to the splits and with that.
Yeah, and I gotta look at, there's some items from Zach for sewer wishlist. We're still looking at this year's budget with doing the lining, where that's hitting, how that's gonna hit, where a fund balance sits with that. So looking at, you know, obviously with those reserves, that, that fund is sitting very nice, so we can take a little look at how we wanna use that more broadly. But we have to look at the overall impact into the sewer budget with it paying its portion of the bills that should be paying.
So the current bottom line number is one point eight-eight-two, plus the four fifty-four on the, am I reading that right? Thanks. And that'll move a little.
Yeah, it'll move a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up, but everything's up. Our budget has to reflect that. And even if we do do the tax increase, we're still below the average cost increase overall.
But the increase that you were, we were speaking about earlier was only going up by like roughly twenty-three cents on the.
Yeah, if you look at the tax.
A quarter or something.
Yeah, if you're looking at the overall tax rate. And that's one thing I've encouraged the board to do, although looking at percentage, you know, the percent, look at, let's set it by rate. Instead of whole dollars, that works much better when you're doing the tax rate. This is clean up. I mean, then you're saying it went from four-seventy-two to four-eighty-five.
Then you're looking at that incremental just difference in terms of what that would mean. You could look at that.
Yep.
On an average for the household.
Yep, we can look at the impact on households. So I think that would be an overall discussion for next time.
Okay.
Is there anything the board needs more from me for the next time?
I think this is so much clearer, just seeing the categories, you know, growing in act space, for me, anyway. It really helps me.
Yeah. What I will be doing is I'll be inputting all this into the computer sheets you're used to seeing, but I wanted to iron it out on Excel.
Sure.
And have the fluctuation, as you know, with it playing and the numbers moving, especially since we're moving lines and then adding lines. And I wanted to make sure the board was good with the lines that I, we have put in there.
So far.
Yeah, yeah. No, you know, this is good, and this is something that we can, you know, be with and sort through. And you're gonna update.
I'll update it. I'll set up the additional sheets to the end to be updated. And then we'll get the outliers.
Helping with village dues and contracts as an expense item, it's in fourteen-ten toward the beginning.
Village dues and contracts?
Yeah.
That's our memberships for different programs, like NICOM and all of them. We've.
We just did the storm sewer.
Storm, yes, storm sewer, that's.
Stormwater Coalition, that's a little, thank you, that's what I meant.
These are all.
A little thinking sewer, I know.
Because it's budgeted for fourteen, and we've only spent three.
Correct. And there's more that's coming in they haven't hit. Or I gotta, some of these lines I have to double check sometimes. Brooklyn, sorry, Brooklyn, sometimes you shift things into a different category because he reads it a different way. And I read it in another way. So it's getting it right into the right bucket.
Sure.
You know, some of these, it's hard, because some of our revenues don't hit till like March.
TY Lin we have, oh, do we have a budgeted, no, 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 never mind. TY Lin at two thousand feels a little light.
Well, it's only if we need them.
We took TY Lin out.
No, we didn't take it out in a reason.
We didn't.
No, we kept it in there for an emergency, in case we lose them.
Oh, I see, for backup. Yep, I forgot.
For backup.
Okay, so that was.
But the good news on that is Zach is doing the building inspector training, so that will provide a backup for us. TY Lin is in case, because we had.
Just two, two feels a little light.
Well, and we haven't used him, we didn't use him in the last couple of years. So we've been good.
Where is the Arboretum on here?
Arboretum.
There it is.
It's there.
Yeah, I have it seventy-one-ten. So the budgeted amount is six thousand.
Correct.
Which also feels a little light to me. So can you flag that as one for us?
I will point out, we're using our different, we have a, you know, coming here. And plus, we have six thousand in the current budget.
That'll roll over?
No, nothing rolls over. But.
Well, the ARPA.
The ARPA is gonna.
Yeah, because we directed a portion of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, we have a good portion of the ARPA funds coming.
Six feels light on that. Can you flag that as one for us to talk about with the broader team?
Do you have an idea?
No, like just, it just smells like a bigger project than six thousand dollars.
Well, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, we're up to, I can't remember, I can't remember what's directed, but it was, anyway, we'll take a look. Okay.
Flower baskets, ten thousand.
And it's other additional plantings as well.
Let's go up the village. Well, I was, I had a meeting, just as an aside, and it's gonna be on the next agenda as well, but I had a meeting with Dan Clifford. And he is gonna be working with the Chamber of Commerce to support our Village in Bloom project. And he's gonna be reaching out to other businesses to see if they'd be willing to help beautify our village by donating for our flower baskets. So that might offset some of what we're spending. And also engage our businesses and other stakeholders, too.
Home street parking personnel services.
That's our parking monitor.
Do we have one currently?
Yeah, we share with.
Mike and James.
We just don't have any revenue yet.
That's because of the, I just, you missed my explanation on that. There is a practice of bringing it in. It has to go to the courts. The courts have to submit it to the state. The problem is, the whole process worked down over COVID, because personnel changes here, personnel changes at the court. Nobody knew what to do. We're trying to get that straight. There was a big meeting with the courts, and we have to plan. And we're at the end of straightening out all the revenue we collected. And there's a healthy little chunk that needs to be filtered back in.
Oh, yeah, it's out there.
I can't claim it until it goes to the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's a.
Yeah, we collected zero.
And then concurrent with that, we're gonna have to look at our fine schedule, too.
Yeah, and that's another thing. We're looking at the fine schedule, plus we're looking at our overall, well, organizational with our totals that we charge and how we do our permit fees and all that. So Steve's taking a look at those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nope, no problem.
We're gonna open it up to questions?
Sure, if there is any.
Did you have a question? Okay, yeah.
Public.
Anybody online commenting? Just to check, just in case.
Nope, I have no comments from the public at this time.
Okay.
I actually have one. This is the, this is just kind of, I wanna kind of pick your brain over. So you mentioned the increased salary for the mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you thinking about doing, I think, for the trustees? I mean, you've been serving, so like, do you think that there should be that drastic of a difference?
Funny, I was thinking about that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I do, because this is, the trustee role, I mean, you can chime in here as well. At first, it, there's a fair amount of work, and then it becomes a steady state. The mayor's job isn't much, like, the thought of somebody being able to work full-time and do the trustee's job is fine. The thought of somebody doing the mayor's job and being able to work full-time is very difficult.
It's hard.
Yeah.
It's hard, yeah.
Yeah. Do you guys think it's fair, like, what you have to come to?
I don't know. We've got.
Well, we can leave this at that, too.
Yeah, for years, we, we talk about this every budget, and.
At first, it, there's a fair amount of work, and then it becomes a steady state. The mayor's job isn't much like, the thought of somebody being able to work full-time and do the trustee's job is fine. Uh, the thought of somebody doing the mayor's job and being able to work full-time is, is very difficult.
It's hard.
Yeah.
It's full-time, yeah.
Yeah. Do you guys think it's fair, like, what you have to come to?
I don't know. We've got
Well, we can leave this at that, too.
Yeah, for years, we, we talk about this every budget, and, um, I mean, I came on and the world shut down. So, and I remember, I think that was the first budget that I had a hand in. And we decided not to raise anything, just symbolically, just didn't feel right. So I don't know, nobody does this because of the money, but it is a good point, um, that you can't, you can have a full-time job and be a trustee. I don't think, I think it'd be very difficult to do a good job being a mayor unless you had a really flexible, you know, job that was full-time, maybe, but you'd have to, then just all the time would be, be, you couldn't have a family or anything else. So, um, I think it is, it does, yeah, it does take, I think it's a different
I think also, you know, what you said, it, we need to also open up to a different demographic.
Right.
You know, I think that's really important. I, I, I really hear that.
Yeah.
You know, because I mean, I factored in
Being a small community, too, I mean, really, there's a lot of people that you should actually reach out to.
Right.
So that would, you know, be willing to come and spend this kind of time with the job.
I learned something from Lily on this, too. Lily was very articulate about if, if you make it zero, then it's not valued. And, and when you don't give a raise even to the trustees, it diminishes the value of someone. I do think it's important that the trustees get paid some. It pays for vacation, which is nice.
Okay.
Doesn't pay for a cup of Jack squat, but
Pay for my taxes is what it does.
Yeah, it'd be better to have everybody here to kind of get some stuff.
For sure.
Yeah, so I think we have that flagged. Okay, anything else? Then I entertain a motion to adjourn. One second.
Broca, trustee P D.
Hi.
Trustee Spencer.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Great job.
Thank you.
So Zach, we have